Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Waltham Township Board of Education Budget Workshop Meeting for Tuesday, March 8th, 2022. Please stand for the flag salute and remain standing for a moment of silence for people in Ukraine fighting for democracy. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Smythe, could we have the sunshine statement and roll call, please?
This is the special meeting of the Waltham Township Board of Education for which adequate notice, sorry, under the Open Public Meeting Act was provided by Notice of Co-Star, Asbury Park Press, Township Clerk's Office, all Waltham Township public schools, and in the Board Administration Office on February 10th, 2022. I'll take a roll call. Mr. Buffett.
Here.
Mr. Hall.
Here.
Ms. Hotnet.
Here.
Mr. Mallett.
Here.
Mr. Nasser.
Here.
Mr. Sanfilippo.
Here.
Mr. Stites. Mr. Wondrack.
Mr. Adenizio.
Here.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we will open up for public comment on any school-related issue.
Betsy Cross, I live in Waltham Township. I guess tonight, we are not live streaming. I guess we're just taping it tonight. So, I'm live streaming it, so we're getting a bunch of people on. Just wanted to mention, there was a court hearing this morning, but I'm not sure what happened because I wasn't on the call, and it's my case. So, I guess Mr. McKeever asked for a hearing, and I didn't agree to not be on the call. And usually, he's incoherent, you can't even understand what he's saying during these, so maybe that's why he didn't want myself and the public on. But like a lot of people are saying, we shouldn't be having any of these hearings without myself and the public on. Otherwise, we shouldn't pay the bills. So, Mr. McKeever should not be paid today. And he asked for the hearing, so I don't even know why he asked for it. But I'm not agreeing, you know, he's asking for more extensions. He was supposed to turn in documents on the 4th, March 4th. Those were not there. I did put in an Oprah for the missing minutes for Mr. Smythe, and he just ignored the request. A lot of times, like he normally does, he just ignored it. So, there was a video that was 2 hours and 6 minutes and 56 seconds, and he sent me an email back saying, "My request fails to identify the medium in which I would like to receive it, and I can go to the website." But that's not the way Oprah works. I'm asking on a disk, or send to me the 2 hours, 6 minutes, and 56 seconds, and hopefully, nobody has destroyed it. And I'm gonna guess that the IT people would not, absolutely would not. So, I just wanna get that on the record. What else? Wanted to ask about... Yeah, I also wanted to mention, there's a new court order that's out, which, you know, I'm not agreeing to, so I'm writing back to my attorney tonight. I'm not agreeing to any new court order that I paid $1,400 for, revised from maybe the way Mr. Smythe would like it. That's not what I'm doing. So, I can see you laughing, Mr. Adenizio. Did wanna ask about the PR firm. I know on December 14th, on the consent agenda, we approved a PR firm, Laura Bishop Communications, for $25,000, or the PR firm is $25,000. Just wondering, what's the status of them? Because I don't know if Mr. Adenizio is the PR firm now, but people just can't believe what's coming out of here. And you still should be live streaming the meetings. So, whatever I say at a public meeting, I can always back it up. So, you know, what I was describing was what is seen in the video. So, I'm hoping that you have seen the videos, that everybody else in town seems to have seen in neighboring towns. But if it's offensive to you, just me saying it, think of how offensive it is to the person that had it happen to them. So, it's ridiculous to think that you're not gonna livestream the meetings. What else? Could you go over, let us know, people can't tell what you're going over tonight. I know you're going over the budget, but at the last meeting, you said you were going over the referendum. So, if you're going over the referendum, can you let people know? Because maybe people watching might wanna head down and hear it if this is when you're gonna be talking about it. That might be helpful. So, after public comment, looks like I'm the only person, hopefully, you can just answer that simple question. $50 million is a lot of money, and I see a very slim chance of it ever passing in wall under Mr. Smythe and Mr. Adenizio. And Mr. Adenizio and Mr. Smythe, they don't have to answer questions, and we don't have to pass a referendum. Last meeting, I asked Mr. Smythe, "What happens in the basement with employees?" And he walked out the door, and he didn't answer the question. So, you gonna write that down, Mr. Smythe? You can let us know what you do in the basement with female employees.
Ms. Cross, you're out of line. You're absolutely out of line, making unfounded allegations again.
All right.
Your time is up. Thank you.
All right.
Yes, Mr. Hall.
I know we're not a lawyer, but is it your understanding in basic law that Mr. McKeever would be able to decide, you know, in a judicial matter, whether or not the court proceeding was open or closed? I mean, isn't that a judge's decision, I would think?
100%.
So, I mean, that's ludicrous to suggest that Mr. McKeever had this power, that he could close this meeting. And then the other thing is, I think the member of the public who just spoke talked about that she wasn't agreeing to this court order. So, that's kinda funny, because I guess everybody else in the world, except for her, needs to follow court orders. So, again, unless I misheard that wrong, but...
No, you did hear it correct.
Anyway, I heard it correctly?
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
Mr. Nasser, did you have that email that was sent today? Could you maybe inform the board and the public about that to clear up the misinformation?
Sure, I'll read it word for word. It says, "Today's status conference will not be on the record, unlike previous court proceedings. You may have previously attended on this matter. Today's matter is just a conference with the attorneys. As a result, we will not be sending out Zoom invites. Should the judge decide to go on record, we will inform you. Alternatively, physical access to the courtroom is available in freehold." And that was, I think, the response that went out to everybody to that.
And who was that sent from?
Arnold Suklaw, the clerk for the judge.
Oh, okay. So, it came actually from the judge's clerk, so nobody stopped anybody from going on, it was the judge's decision?
Yes.
Okay. So, more misinformation, okay. And then as...
9:11.
As well...
Point of order.
Yeah.
9:30.
Yes. Mr. Smythe, did you wanna address anything? Again, missing minutes, which is not true.
Only to comment with regard to the comment that Oprah's were ignored was also followed up in the next sentence, saying that the response provided requested what medium to provide the request. Because the requested record is available on the district website through the YouTube channel.
Ms. Cross, your time is up.
So, a response was provided in a timely manner to the Oprah request.
Okay. And Ms. Cross, I'd suggest maybe you need to go back and talk to your attorney. If he's not including you in emails as to when court proceedings are, that's your problem, not ours. So, thank you. Any other... Okay. We will move on. Ms. Cross, your time is up. Please stop yelling out.
Stop lying.
No, please, take your own advice.
I got the Zoom link.
All right. Dr. Henderhand, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Adenizio. Good evening, Board. Thank you for assembling this evening to participate in our next budget workshop sessions. Last month, in the end of February, we discussed, Dr. Rando, the interim Assistant Superintendent, was here to discuss the allocations for the grant funding expenditures and projected projects and services for the students in Waltham Township schools. So, that was very informational, and I appreciate that. Additionally, Mr. Cranston, our, the District Director of Human Resources, was here to provide, really lay some groundwork for the development of the budget in terms of personnel, and that includes staffing. So, his presentation was one of really setting a table for our next workshop session to be held on April 12th. And on April 12th, we will be hearing from Mr. Cranston again to present out on staffing and personnel matters in terms of salaries. And we will also be welcoming that evening Mr. John Hyam, our Director of Informational Technology. And it will be really an illuminating presentation where we really outline some of our technology goals and proposed purchases for the 2022 to 2023 year. On April 12th, Mr. Smythe will also be providing the board with some information to facilitate discussion for capital projects and also operational costs for the 2022-2023 school year. This evening, we once again will be welcoming Dr. Donna Rando, who will tonight be discussing curriculum and instruction initiatives and proposed budget in those two particular areas for your consideration and for discussion. And we also have Ms. Kelly Bond, our Director of Special Services, and she will be here to provide some insight into the special education budget for the 2022-2023 school year. Without any further ado, I would like to welcome Ms. Bond and Dr. Rando to the center And as they get situated... Might be easier to switch the text. Okay, good. Well, this evening, our discussion will begin with Ms. Bond and those of you that were in Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting last week, had a little bit of appetizer for this evening's presentation. So, Ms. Bond, I'm gonna turn this over to you, and I'm signing off, turning it over.
Thank you. How is everybody? It's nice to see everyone. So, good evening, and thank you very much for the opportunity to talk about the special services proposed budget for '22-23. I'm always happy to talk about the important work that we do in the Special Services Department. And I do wanna take a moment to mention that I'm so proud of what I've seen in the past couple of months since my return to wall in walking around observing classrooms and just really seeing the important work that everyone does. So, I do wanna just take a moment to thank all of the staff that makes this department so wonderful, and certainly to thank the board for your continued support of our programs, because without your support, we wouldn't have all the success that we do. So, the proposed budget supports the missions and the founding principles of special education. The heart of our work is truly to care for students, but our actions also must align with the New Jersey Administrative Code and all the federal regulations that come along with it. In addition to that, the student services, the special services budget encompasses the nursing services and home instruction services for the district in its entirety. The proposed budget creates the quality programs that we need to meet the needs of all learners across the district, from the least to the most restrictive environment. So, in your packet, you'll see that there's a continuum of placements where we educate our students. And in order to do so with fidelity, it differs based upon the environment in which the student is educated in. So, you see that we have special programs across our district, starting with our three-year-olds at Wall Primary School, that continues on through 21-year-olds and sometimes 22-year-olds at Wall High School with S-3434 that passed last year. Some of our students remain with us for an additional year, which certainly impacts Another slide that I wanted to share with you was something that we use when we are budgeting for our programs. So, you'll see the maximum class sizes that can be used in those different types of classes. So, for example, if you look at an in-class resource section, which is where you have two teachers, general education and a special education teacher, at the elementary level, you can have eight special education students. If you moved up to nine, if you needed nine, you would need another section of that class. There is no option to go above that. If you look at resource room for elementary, six students. If we were to go up to seven, we would be legally required to add a paraprofessional to that section to meet the legal requirements. So, using this, in addition with the child study team projections that they share with me for what they're planning for students for next year, I work with Mr. Cranston and the building principals to talk about staffing and personnel. So, all that work is underway. You know, we are working diligently to make sure that we're appropriately budgeted in that area for next year. The next slide demonstrates the downward trend in out-of-district placements from many, many years ago to today. And the number of out-of-district students that we budget for can fluctuate in a given moment, so we really budget for what we have in the moment. Tomorrow, a student could require a placement, a student could move in from another town that we are obligated to maintain that placement, and certainly, we work to return students to district whenever it's possible. So, although the number fluctuates, we try to give you the truest picture that we have in the moment. But this downward trend is something that I think the district should be really proud of, because the programs that have been created within this district and the monies that have been, you know, made a priority to create those programs and maintain them have allowed us to have more students in district as time goes on. In addition to that, I also just wanna mention that sometimes, or many times, we have students from smaller neighboring towns who don't have the quality programs that we do here that want their children to come here and will have tuition contracts with us to have their children attend our programs. Okay. So, the special services budget really encompasses all of the expenses needed to run all of those programs and to really meet the needs of the whole child. So, we do provide a wide array of different evaluations, contracted professional services, specialized equipment, technology, specialized curriculum that goes into those programs. And although the special services budget is broken down into many lines, so that we can ensure that purchasing is very accurate based upon the building or the program in which we're purchasing something for, I did kind of group things together into some overarching themes of what the budget encompasses. So, you'll see that out-of-district tuition is a large bucket of what the special services budget, you know, what goes towards those students. Then you'll see that extraordinary services. So, extraordinary services can be students in district or out of district. So, for example, we could have an out-of-district student who we pay their tuition, and then maybe they also are medically fragile and need a one-to-one nurse on the bus. That nurse would be considered an extraordinary service. So, in addition to their education, we're paying for that service. So, the extraordinary service costs include in and out of district students. Professional services, we offer occupational physical therapy to the students with IEPs in our district. We have students that might need neurological exams, psychiatric exams. We may need to have a bilingual evaluation for a student who English is not their primary language. So, we really, again, really look to meet the needs of the entire child. You'll see supplies and materials are certainly within the budget, so for some of our specialized programs, we need specific materials and curriculum within those, and we support that. And then home instruction across the district for students who might be medically fragile and maybe in need of that service for a period of time. And the nursing supplies, those could be flu shots, the materials that the nurses need for the daily running of their offices. All of those things are encompassed within the budget. So, that concludes the overview, and I appreciate the opportunity to share with you the many things that this department offers to the students of wall, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any... Mr. Hall?
Yeah, I'd like to get back to the topic of the out-of-district versus in-district placement. And again, I was kinda startled when I saw this today, the downward trend, which I think is good, and I think, you know, like you said, that's something that I'd be proud of, is that we've built a very, you know, a quality program here that certainly the residents of the town, whose children partake in that benefit from. But because it's such a robust program and it is doing well, we don't have to spend the ridiculously high price of out-of-district placement. So, it's actually a budget saver to some degree. The more robust we can make our special services division, the better we can make that. We're saving money by not, oh, we can't handle that child's needs, we have to send them out. So, if we can handle it in-house, we're actually, even though we're spending a lot of money, it's actually less money than we would have spent if we had to send them out. And like you said, if you're a child in Spring Lake, or Seagurt, or some Bradley Beach, some of these smaller places that have children, they're legally obligated to provide those services. They're not gonna set up a whole program to handle just a handful of children based on their small enrollment, so that's when they look to come to wall, and we can take them in, charge them that tuition, and become, well, for that service. So, I think, again, looking at this quickly and just going through it and hearing your comments, I concur that that's a very interesting part of this that I didn't realize, that we had actually reduced the amount of out-of-district placements by so much. So, I think that's a testament to your whole team and your group and your predecessors and everybody who's been involved in this over the last few years.
Thank you. Thank you. And to make one comment about that as well, I appreciate everything that you said. The other thing is, without a district tuition, right, we can't control it. So, sometimes you'll find that their increases might not be what we would typically expect an increase to be. So, keeping kids in district is certainly a top priority for multiple reasons. But I think we do a very nice job of systematically making that decision. If we really are not the best placement for a child, we're not going to keep them here for a financial reason. You know, we are gonna place them in the placement, that is most appropriate for them, but I think for families and students, your neighborhood school is the best place you can be if it meets your needs.
Any other board members?
If I could just add to that, because with regard to that projection, that report with the numbers coming down, that's not always reflected with regard to the cost of out-of-district tuition, just because the costs have increased over the years. So, the costs may have, you know, actually increased, but imagine what they would have increased if the numbers had actually increased. And I think also, you know, you mentioned about other districts not setting up programs, so they're sending their students here on the appropriation side of the budget, where we have the cost of our in-house programs, they're not offset by that tuition. Our tuition is recorded as a revenue, so we report on what our actual costs are. But on the other side of the books, you look at our out-of-district or the students that we're receiving from other districts, it's about 3/4 of a million dollars that we receive in revenue that is used to fund this budget. So, it's to that point.
And I get emails on a regular basis. I have to tell you, I mean, people are looking at our programs, and whether it be that a sibling who was here years ago, or the director is aware they had an experience with another child who was sent here, we get emails regularly to review records and to determine if a child's appropriate. So, I think that, you know, goes to show what people think about our programs.
Mr. Sanfilippo?
Kind of piggybacking on both of those comments, I wrote, and you mentioned that when you have somebody move to the town, that there are times when they, I'm assuming they're gonna keep their educational experience that they have before they move, continue, right? But are there any points in time when they can assimilate into the school district, or is that just for the remainder of the year, and then we try to bring them, you know, back in district? Or can you kind of explain how that works a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. So, when we receive any student from another district, whether it's out of district or they have an ICR program, the law requires that we look at that IEP and we provide a comparable program. So, we might not have exactly what that IEP says, but we need to provide as comparable of a program as we offer in district. And then you review the IEP moving forward after the child transitions to our district. So, with an out-of-district student, certainly, you would maintain for educational stability, you would maintain their program where they are, and then our case managers would go out, they would observe the child, meet the family, we would start having those conversations. Because, you know, to your point, if we had a student move to us who lived in a smaller town, who didn't have a program that we offer, we would start that conversation if the child was appropriate to be in district. Or it could also be a conversation of how long is the child on the bus? If they lived in a place, then they may move to us, and the child's going to be on the bus for a long time, we take that into consideration too, you know, because it's a long day, it can be a long day.
Did anybody else have anything? I actually had a couple. So, a few years ago, the board at the time that I was part of, we did look at, you know, trying to bring more things in-house, just because even transportation costs are a lot at times. Now, with the out-of-district tuition, is transportation in that, or is that a separate line item someplace else?
That's a separate line item, that's not included in the out-of-district tuition costs. That's strictly tuition.
So, the transportation costs wouldn't necessarily be part of the special services budget, it would just be a different line item?
Correct.
Okay. So, all right. And, I mean, it is a testament to the staff we have, the teachers and past supervisors and yourself, for what this program has accomplished and how sought after it is. With that, because we have brought more things in-house, and I think Dr. Henderhand at one point might have mentioned it, or somewhere it was said, that it seems like we are starting to have more smaller classes, because there are more children involved in this with special needs and different IEPs and things. Have you taken a look, or had the opportunity to take a look, like, projection-wise, you know, our space for smaller rooms and, you know, things that we might need to look at, not this year, but going into the future that we can start to plan for?
That's a great question. And the facilities aspect of it, I have been a bit involved with, in particular, at the high school level. I mentioned before the regulation that came out, S-3434, which required us to provide an additional year to students who were, there was three graduation years that a student could stay until they were 21. Now, in addition to the slide I shared with you with class maximums, there's also age ranges in which we are required to comply with. So, in looking at next year in our projections, we have to ensure that students are in with the appropriate age ranges. So, we've been looking at an additional room we might need there, so I've been working with Ms. Circhio and Dr. Samaha on creating some of those. So, that's really more of an immediate situation. I think... I think you're asking me more for a long-term plan and looking at where we're going to be. And I will admit, I haven't really scratched that, you know, the surface of that yet. But I do know our elementary schools are, you know, packed. So we do need to start looking at, you know, if we have these programs in our buildings, they are a room, right? And they may have six students in them based upon need, and that, and that does utilize a classroom. So, you know, that is definitely something I will be working on with the principals.
Okay. And kind of along the same lines, so we have, over the last several years, brought more programs back in-house. Have you, and I know you haven't been back very long, so, I mean, maybe something going forward, but have you looked at anything in particular yet, or said, you know what, maybe that might be something we're able to do a year, two years from now? Have you kind of done that yet?
You know, I've been in all of the classrooms, I've gone, I've worked with the teachers, and talked with them about the different curriculums and things they're using. You know, I think we primarily have, we have our MD classes, we have our ERI classes, which were previously known as behavioral disability classes, and we have our language learning disabled. So those are the three self-contained classes that we currently have in district. There are other self-contained types of classes that you can have that might meet the needs of learners, you know, in a more specific manner. So I think that as we look at the projections, and as we look at the students who are coming in, having my role at primary is amazing, because I know the students who will be moving up. So that's a really positive experience for me, because we might look at those students and say, you know what, the three self-contained programs we're offering might not meet their needs, we might need to expand. So, again, not a, not an answer for right now, but certainly that will be things that we look at to ensure that we have appropriate programs.
Okay. Thank you. And certainly glad you're back.
Thank you. I'm glad to be back. Thank you.
Thank you. So I get Dr. Rando, right? Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. When I was here, I believe it was two weeks ago, I gave you an overview of the grant funds that we have for the district, and how that allocation has been distributed. For tonight, and I also shared this at the CNI committee meeting this past Thursday, I wanted to just give you an overview, or just put that in this PowerPoint, so you can see it a little bit maybe more clearly with some wording. Our first grant that we get annually, and it was always the only grant we ever received, was the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, and that is given annually. And we usually get the information in June or early July, and we have to submit that grant. There are four areas, we have to make sure that we address each of those areas, and that specific money that's targeted pending the enrollment of students of the district, et cetera. So that changes every year. The second grant that we get, or the first grant we got because of COVID, was the Corona Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, which was first called CARES Act. And that was given in March of 2020. It was awarded here in the district in June of 2020, after the application was completed. And it also had some criteria of what you had to do. It was not as specific as we move on to ESER II and ESER III, because they wanted the schools to have the money and use it whichever way they can to address the issues with COVID, whether you were going through a school closing, or whether you were going to be reopening of schools. The second ESER grant that was awarded, was awarded in, I believe it was in May of 2021. And that also was allocated for us, and they gave two additional monies with regard to learning acceleration and mental health. So that was identified in that way, the first time they identified mental health as an area of concern in learning acceleration. And then the third grant was awarded for, in November of 2021. And that also began to, was broken out by area of how you had to address those concerns. So they became more and more specific as they gathered more information on how schools are functioning during the past two years. In some cases, there's monies that you must spend for these areas, it's listed here. In other cases, it was open-ended, as long as it was related to COVID. And they give you a, you know, a list of things, and they ask you, did you use it for this, that, et cetera? And you click off all the things that we use it for, and you have to confirm that within the grant as you write it. So I just wanted to give you, this is the summary with the information that I gave you last week. So moving on, one of the areas of curriculum and instruction is professional development. And we do have staff register for workshops. This past year, a lot of those workshops were conducted virtually. They, you know, we all moved into that platform and became a way for us to learn. So that is money that's aside for that. More and more this year, they're going to be starting to be coming live again. We also use this money to consult with some companies for teacher growth and instructional strategies. And the third thing we use the money for is our professional development day. This past year, we had it in November, it was, no, it was October 11th. And it was very, very successful, and we were very fortunate to have people who were available for us. It was a live training day, and we are going to be having it again this year. So that amount of money, $76,900, is for that PD. Moving on to curriculum, the state had new standards in four areas in 2020. And those areas were social studies, visual and performing arts, computer science and design thinking, and world languages. With what we had to go through for the past two years, we were unable to accommodate that. And the state decided to give us a dispensation. And they said that by September 2022, you must implement the standards that were written for 2020. So this budget is, has been increased significantly, because we will be doing a lot of the curriculum writing this time of the year, or during the summer, so that you can adopt it for August, and we can implement it. The supervisors, knowing this, have been working with the teachers all year, even doing it last year, and the training of what the standards are, how they changed from the previous year to this year, doing that during department meetings times, curriculum development meeting times, teachers have been going out to some workshops, they've been reporting out, and so the teachers are becoming more, you know, well-versed in what the standards are, and now what we have to do is update our curricula to reflect that. In addition to our summer curriculum development planning, we use the funding for ESL testing. We have RTI, which is a response to intervention, to help our teachers analyze data that we receive and identify student needs. Our data teams, also our new teacher orientation, again, was a great success this year. When the teachers walked in, we worked with the technology department, and I was truly amazed. The teachers walked in, picked up their laptop, they already had their Gmail account, they were ready to log on, and the training was applicable and ready to go. So I thank the technology department for working with the CNI department during the summer. It was very successful, I was very, very pleased. And we received some comments from the teachers saying how it was well-received by them as well. And we do have money in the project for some learning, learning gaps issues, and the event that our funding for ESER is going to be used for something else. So that's been put in there as a cushion. We do have the, this, next week, we have the graduation proficiency assessment that's coming in. We expect to get those, that information before the end of the year. We will have the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments coming out in May. We'd like to have that done as well. So we will use that data as well. And if we need to identify some programs for students, so that they could meet the graduation requirement and get assistance with these new state testing, we would have that available. Program evaluation. Program evaluation occurs as part of the curriculum cycle. And as many school districts had to do in New Jersey, I'm sure, across the country, that curriculum cycle was revised over the past two years, because it was very challenging to try to conduct a program evaluation. So these four areas, the program evaluation was completed this year. Social studies was reported out to CNI this past week. Visual and performing arts will be reported out in April, as well as computer science, design, thinking. World language was started last year and finished this year, and that will also be reported out. And the whole point of program evaluation is for the teachers with the supervisors to begin to decide and to look into their current program, and to say, what do we, what should be, remain the same, and what should be different? That is relative to the standards that change, the state assessments that change, the needs of students, our population, et cetera. What I've noticed is, like, generally should be a trend, that once a program evaluation occurs, what follows up are resources connected to that. So I will show that on the next slide. What also happened was, if I look at next year, I would like to see program evaluation for math and science. Now, the program evaluation actually occurred about the year before the pandemic, but nothing was done about it. So we have that copy, and it's been on hold. However, because those standards didn't require change for 2022, we were holding off on that, and the teachers and the supervisors feel that they did not need the resources, where the two, the four program evaluations above reflect the new standards. So therefore, that had to take priority over the math. And so the following year, we would be looking for mathematics resources or textbooks, and science resources and textbooks. My point is that, once a program evaluation is completed, we need to put money in the budget, a chunk of money for tech, for online resources, for textbooks, et cetera. So if you look on the following slide, it identifies what we need for social studies, and for visual and performing arts. So that amount of money may most likely occur every year as we move forward, so we can make sure that our books and our resources are current. Right now, when you buy textbooks, there's typically a licensure that goes associated with it. So we either buy a five-year or a six-year. I don't recommend that we go anything beyond the six-year, because things can change. So students get online access, and we also get textbooks. And we can decide, you know, which way we're going to go with that, but I think both are important. So that amount, if we keep that in the back of our mind, is most likely going to be every year in the textbook account budget. Schools, any books that teachers have to buy, principals have to order for their buildings because of enrollment, or they have to be replaced, that comes out of a textbook budget. That's not out of the CNI curriculum budget. Going on to instructional technology, there's a lot of software that we've been reviewing. If you recall, I mentioned this last, last time as well. When I first came to the district, we had a lot of software. When we surveyed teachers, we found out we were not using it as, as much as we should. So we streamlined a lot of the software, and we did the same process this year. So this is the software that the teachers and the supervisors and the administrators agree are most appropriate for us. There's a brand-new one, which is Actively Learn, which we are using for our English, Science, and Social Studies classes. It's an interactive learning device, which actually allows the teachers to have, it does scaffolding, it does a variety of reading, it's an excellent, excellent resource. And our teachers reviewed the document, as well as our supervisors, and felt that that is a better replacement from what we used in the past, which calls Newsella, I believe it was. Yeah, they felt that this is much more current. So that's that amount for all that software. Going into some technology-supporting instruction, our teachers are evaluated based on their lesson plans, based on the Danielson model, and including what's called student growth objectives. That is all electronic, and in order for us to do that, we use a software called OnCourse. That amount of money is included there for $35,000. And another piece of supporting instructional technology that we use is called Frontline. And one is where teachers want to go on a conference, they actually have to document why they're going, what are the goals, how does it address my needs or the needs of my department? It gets routed, and they have to submit a report when they complete it, and we use that software. RTI, which is Response to Intervention, was purchased in 2020. It was the first summer of our past year, two years of what we've been going through. And teachers have been, teachers, as well as administrators, have been trained on that. We do need to move more, how can I say, more collaboratively, and getting more of a district movement on that. Right now, we work it, done at the school level, and we have teams at each of the schools. We've had training with that. That's something that I'd like to see move even further with what we need to do for RTI. And IEP Direct, I put on here, I know that my counterpart here pays for that, but since it was in the contract that I basically sign over, I put it in there as something that we do for our students. Instructional supplies, this is what teachers put in for what they need. It can include a variety of instructional practices from all different departments. So if it's from K to 12, and this is the amount of money. The first number, K to 5, and 912, is not an error, I checked it about five times. The sum of the four elementary schools adds up to the high school. So when I looked on here, I thought it was a mistake, but it isn't. So that's the amount of money for $888,000 for our instructional supplies for the district, includes any academy work that we need as well. And lastly, I know, two more, we have educational media supplies. We do have district expenditures for what's called Makerspace Supplies, eBooks, databases, et cetera, at $80,000. And we keep, Follett, which has been a very, you know, longstanding software that librarians use in order to make sure that we have materials for our teachers, and that's at $8,500. And then here is the current tuition that we keep in place for students to transfer to charter schools, or the Monmouth County Vocational Program at the high school. Any questions?
Any board members have any questions? Mr. Sanfilippo?
I had one. You mentioned the social studies and upgrading to the standards. That's, is that the first time that that's happened with social studies?
What the state does is, I believe it's every, every five years, they change. The last, the last set of standards was at 2014, and prior to that was 2009. So with the, and that, the state does that with all of the standards. And those four standards were due in 2020, until they, they try not to do them all the same years. When they went into the Common Core, they changed all of the standards at the same time. After that, they beginning to, you know, weed them out, so everyone's not involved at the same time.
Anybody else? Mr. Malath?
Thanks, Mr. President. I'm just wondering why the cost for supplies at the intermediate school is so much less than the others?
That's, that's, I, well, elementary, elementary purchases, instructional supplies, they also include some of their musical instruments and things of that nature. I was digging into that to find out why that is that as much. And they do it for all the content areas. The middle school, because we supply the books, the materials, there's not that great of a need for their instructional materials that they're doing. So in other words, any, if they're using things at the elementary that deal, well, the elementary does, you know, the markers and the post-its, and all the stuff to support the Language Arts and Reading Program, and you do that for K to 5 with that many number of students, it adds up to that. Whereas at the middle school, those resources don't include those materials that are used at the elementary level.
And just following up, with the purchases of the new textbooks that are coming up, and you were talking about licensing for online things, is it still the preferred opinion that, you know, hard, you know, textbooks are needed in addition to the online services?
Well, this is, this is how the companies get, the companies begin to offer package deals. They will say something like, we'll give you only online for this amount. However, we have our special needs population who feel that they need textbooks. So sometimes what we look and consider in saying, well, maybe we should buy only a class set for that. Or maybe some kids can take them, some kids don't. So the money, the amount that was put in here includes, I, it's like, I think it's a six, it is a six-year subscription with textbooks. However, it's, it's not that, I don't, we have to look into further to see, if we don't buy all the textbooks, but we want all the subscriptions, can we make a deal? And that's something that we're working on. This quote right now is all textbooks and all instructions. So it is, you know, So it is, you know, it is getting more of everything. As we move forward with the company, we want to see if we can reduce it to a class set or, and, and we do, definitely want to keep online. That's, that's the key. However, we don't feel that we can do only online because of some of the needs of some of the students. And that's what we have to look at. Yeah.
Dr. Rando, just so I'm clear. So you said generally like a five-year subscription, a six-year subscription. So you get the online and you get the textbook. So does that mean after, let's say, five years, if you have a five-year, you're no longer supposed to use the textbooks, textbook anymore?
No, the textbooks are okay, but they will, they will turn off the online. And, and if you, if you're in a, in a situation where you need to go further with that because you're not ready, for example, this COVID year, there were schools whose subscription was over. And you had to basically buy one more year of the subscription so that you can keep the program and then decide if you want to move forward. That's how that online has, has worked out.
And the, the online program, so all of us, clearly, we learned from textbooks, there was no online. So what, what's the online part of it? So is it extra information that's not included in the textbook? Or is it just a mirror copy of the textbook?
It is the textbook. It is the textbook. And very often, they provide some other pieces to it, like assessments or things of that nature. But it is, it is the textbook so that you don't have to carry it. And, you know, you're not printing it. Parents could use it if they're child parent or someone has a tutor wants to help them out. You can go online, you can look at it. Children go away on the summer or on vacation, they could access it, you know, and, and work on it. So it is, it is a very viable source.
So the, the, the numbers that you provide, that's for textbooks for every student and an online subscription for every student?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. But they gave us like different tiers.
Right.
And at this point, it hasn't been, I mean, we're in the process of doing it all. And, you know, this is due also. So we want to, we want to make a decision on how that's actually going to go. So that number may change, you know, in a week or two, you know, when Brian tells me I have to make a decision. And I will, we'll move on that. But at this point, because remember, what they gave me, this was like two weeks ago. So it's February, they're still doing this. And they're still trying to see what the, but their choices are not always what every district wants. They have like packages. So you have to say, do I want this package? Or do I want that package? And, you know, I, I, it would be nice if all the online was free and just buy the book. But when, when that first came out, I thought that's how it worked, but it doesn't.
Certainly for the price, you would think.
Yeah.
So, so we could wind up with some kind of hybrid type thing where we have maybe enough books for a class and they keep sharing them and everybody has an online.
Correct. Exactly. Many districts do do that and find that it's easier.
We'll know that when Brian sharpens his pencil.
Well, and Dr. Rando, yes, you need to make a decision.
Yes, I know I am. I, I haven't.
So this would be considered the worst-case scenario financially for this category?
Yes, well, actually, when I, when I received the, you know, I was putting the budget together and I received it and I was getting like different tier prices about what to put in the budget. And I, my decision was to put in what we need the most. And as we move forward, when Brian tells me I have to, I will make that and cut it. If I put the least and then we find out that there's something glitch and we need more, I thought it would be, it would be better to do it this way.
But I think what would be important to discuss is similar to what we do with capital projects, for a district of this size, K-12, what should the district be anticipating on an annual basis? What should we be budgeting for textbook adoption?
Yeah, I would, I would say you probably need about between 400, 500, worst-case scenario, every year.
That would be 1,000.
1,000, is what I say, yeah.
Not 400, 500, for those of you watching at home.
400, 500, 1,000, I would say. And it would fluctuate. So for example, next year, I already have the, in my, I have it in my spreadsheet, the amount of money for science and math, 612. So we already have quotes from companies thinking that we were going to do it this year. But because social study was a priority, we took a step back on that. And the standards didn't change for the math. They changed for the social studies, the world language, et cetera. So that's going to come into next year's budget. And we're going to look and see, do we need a book for every student for that particular program? And the monies are coming in like this with the companies.
I just would like to add to, one of the things, having ordered textbooks, like personally, many, for many, many years, you have to factor in shipping. And shipping can take in a, a big chunk. And I mention this solely because of the increase of gas prices that have gone up. So we're, I know I am anticipating to see a little spike in, in shipping because of our, you know, transportation. And all of us are very familiar with all logistics, supply chain challenges that have been occurring. Hopefully, they will get better. But certainly, I anticipate the cost of shipping to increase.
So just more bad news.
I have a quick question. This is more for Mr. Smythe. The grants that were listed were for this year, but some of them carry over into the next few years. Where do they reflect here? And I think we went over this in committee, but where do they reflect in the overall revenue side of things? I know.
Well, the, the grants that Dr. Rando referenced are Fund 20. So what we're working on is Fund 10. So when the final, at the public hearing, when we pass a resolution, there'll be three funds. We'll have the general fund, we'll have the special revenue fund, and then we'll have our debt service fund. The, the grant funds are accounted for in the special revenue. So there's not a tax levy against that. Those funds, both the revenue and appropriations, we handle the appropriations and the revenue comes from either the state or the federal aid, or in this case, you know, these specific grants.
So are the expenses coming out of Fund 10 or Fund 11?
No, so any costs that we are appropriating toward the grants, those costs are expensed out of Fund 20. So they don't, they're not part of our Fund 10 budget that we create. And it's not as though we spend the funds out of Fund 10 and then reimburse them from a grant. That's not how we handle it. We, we expense them out of Fund 20 and then we seek reimbursement where we refund Fund 20 or we fund Fund 20 directly.
Okay, so it's safe to say those are sequestered from the rest of the budget.
Correct.
For reimbursement purposes.
Yes, the reference here, because there's some things that the district is weighing whether to include it in the annual school budget or whether it would be better suited for the grant or we can't fit it in the budget for the current year. So the grant is an option. But as we always discuss, those costs that we anticipate having on an annual basis, such as if we should have a textbook adoption at 200 to 250,000 dollars, as opposed to Dr. Rando's 500,000 dollars. You know, that should be something that we should be anticipating and including in the budget on an annual basis. We should not be taking a textbook adoption. That's something that should be a recurring expense for us and funding that out of the grant unless we want to exceed what we would normally include in the budget.
Okay, and I'm right, I'm asking for a reason. I knew the answer to that. And it's because we've been trying to build sustainability into the budget every year so that when it comes to these programs, we're able to fund them on an ongoing basis without having a massive cut in one place or needing massive revenue in another. So, thank you, Brian.
Did anybody else have any questions? Dr. Andrew?
Well, I would very much like to thank Dr. Rando and Ms. Bond for coming out this evening to give us some insight into next year's priorities for their respective areas and also to share some of, well, all of their respective budgets. And I would like to stress that the budget process continues. And as Dr. Rando was mentioning, the sharpening of the pencil, this is all going on behind the scenes. But it is really important that the board really gets insight into the process, into the priorities. And I think it's imperative that they, that you hear it from the leaders in the particular area. I think it's critical because, you know, this is there every day, every minute in Walthamshire Public Schools. So the questions are truly best answered by them. They could provide some passion. They can provide some, you know, anecdotes that can really illuminate the process. I would like to add that for, just to recap about the process, for the budget workshops, they have been structured as different themes. So you would have noticed that we had themes from the last workshop. Tonight, we have a theme, Curriculum, Instruction, and Special Education. And for our next workshop is April 12. And again, I just would like to reiterate that that will be technology, that will be personnel, most specifically staffing, and also operations along with capital projects. So all of the board committees have been incredibly busy behind the scenes. The administration, the faculty, the staff members have been incredibly busy, again, behind the scenes to refine these numbers for you. These, we have, we're using the committee structure where a lot of deep conversations are going on in the committee so that the 2022, 2023 budget can, we can be as efficient as we possibly can. We can also invest in our priorities. And as Mr. Nazar just mentioned, the goal is sustainability. And the discussion of this, the textbooks is a great one because whether it's software, whether it's an eBook, whether it's electronic textbook, whether it's a hard textbook, or a medium I haven't even encountered yet because it's, is 2022, we need to be prepared for that. And it's critical. And it's critical that we budget for the instructional program because, you know, that is an absolute priority of every person in this room is to educate the children of Walthamshire Public Schools as best and efficiently as possible. So it is a delicate balance. And I would like to applaud all of those, certainly in this room, and those who weren't able to join us this evening that have been working diligently to create a budget that we can be proud of as a school district. So I just wanted to share those thoughts.
Thank you. Any board members have anything? Yes?
I just wanted to share because in curriculum, curriculum and instruction, we had the privilege of listening to the social studies overview. And these program evaluations are extensive. And Dr. Skinner presented to us, you know, all the different stakeholders that she's taking into account when she looks at the social studies, history curriculum across the grade levels, and also comparing us to other districts, which I was really happy to hear about and see because we want to make sure that we, you know, can compete. So in the minutes, I will always make sure to type up a gist of what we've covered, but that's how it shows up in our budget. So just to thank you for that.
Thank you for that.
Dr. Skinner did a great job of providing insight into the extensive process of program evaluations.
If there's nothing else.
If, I just want to, yes. Remind everyone, in, in going forward, the board meeting on March 22nd will be looking to approve a tentative budget for the purposes of submission to the Department of Education so that they can do their compliance review. Between now and then, there's a number of meetings that are set up within additional with the administration with regard to the budget. We'll be making some decisions. So to be able to have a balanced budget for the meeting on the 22nd, for the board to approve as a tentative budget. But as Dr. Handerhand and Kidd, we have another workshop meeting on April 12. The public hearing is, will be on April 26, where the final budget will be created. And there'll be committee meetings prior to that happening and after the tentative budget. But there is a, it's still a working document, but I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that on the packet on the 18th, prior to the 22nd, there'll be additional information with regard to a tentative budget that'll be presented for the board to vote on, on the 22nd.
And I would like to just stress a word that Mr. Smythe used, and that is tentative. A tentative budget on, to be approved for submission at our March 22nd meeting. There is still, you know, it's tentative. And there, I certainly expect that there will be some revisions between the 22nd and certainly April 26, when, when we will, we will be presenting the, the budget hearing.
And, and just for everybody, because a lot of the board is fairly new, what that means is we, we have to approve it and send it to the state so they can look at it. But we have the ability to change everything in it if we wanted. If we didn't like numbers in certain areas, if we wanted to blow the whole thing up and almost start over,